Hearing Examiner on October 5th, 2022 at 1:30 in the afternoon. We are located in the first floor conference room of the Bonner County Administration Building, 1500 Highway 2, Sandpoint, Idaho. We are streaming online via Zoom and YouTube. Is there anyone in attendance in need of special assistance to hear, see, or participate in these proceedings? Please take note of the hearing procedure on the screens. Public hearing procedures, staff presents the staff report, applicant provides overview of project, answers questions from the governing body. Public testimony, support, neutral, and opposed, or and/or opposed. Three-minute limit exhibits must be numbered prior to testimony. Testimony must be specific to the project and co-compliance. Applicant rebuttal, no public testimony allowed after rebuttal, and then the public hearing close. Deliberations will begin with me, myself, and I. Okay. Since we are looking at two conditional use permits, I will be submitting my written decision within five business days of this hearing. And then I would like to leave the room in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands as our nation.
At this time, I want to ask the staff if there were any changes to the agenda.
Yes, so we have, we noticed on this agenda being 0012-22. Upon your review, we decided there's a conflict of interest with this file, so I discussed it with legal counsel, he agreed as well. So we're gonna not hear this file today, and that file will be scheduled to go to zoning commission for their review and their decision.
Thank you. Any other changes to the agenda?
No.
Are there any announcements at this time? And are there any corrections or changes to the September 14th, 2022 hearing meetings, minutes? No, then I declare them approved. Okay, at this time, we are going to listen, or looking at file number CUP 0012-22. Conditional use permit request for a duplex. The applicants are requesting a conditional use permit for the construction of a duplex on a point four or five acre lot. The property is owned Alpine Village. The project is located off Snowplow Road in Section 20 Township 58 North, Range 2 West, Boise Meridian. I do not have any conflict of interest with this file, so I am going to turn it over to the staff.
Hearing Examiner, Daniel Britt, by any staff for the record. This afternoon discussed the duplex of the Twister Mountain. These are the standards for which this CUP was reviewed against. That case requesting a conditional use permit for a duplex in Twister Mountain, it's just under a half acre. There's comprehensive plan Alpine Community. The zoning district is Alpine Village, accesses parallel run road onwards to Snowplow Road. Services that are available for this lot are water through Schweitzer Basin Water LLC. Sewer is provided through Mountain Utility Company. Fire protection is supported through Schweitzer Fire and power is Northern Lights. So background, environmental features on this property, it does contain slopes of very, 15, over 30% grade. It does not contain any map wetlands, it does not contain any river stream or lake frontage. But duplexes are allowed in the Alpine District. Now, my those district for BCRC 12332 is on screen this afternoon. It does have to meet one standard, however, and that's Note 2. Note 2 for Alpine Bill's district requires that vehicles for the duplex shall be 15,000 square feet where all urban services are provided. The lot is a pricing 19,000 square feet and will have all of the services therefore is meeting this standard. In addition to the all the performance standards that are found in Bonner County Revised Code. These are the departments or the agencies that were routed for comments. Independent Highway District responded that letters attached to your file this afternoon. Certain Department of Environmental Quality also made a comment. That's attached to your file. I don't Department of Fish and Game and Health District, no comments. No public comments were received on this file. The findings of facts have not changed since the time staff report was prepared. Nor are the conclusions of law. Additional, in addition to the standard conditions of approval for a CUP, this one also needs to submit a geotech analysis. At the time of building a motion permit because the C grade 30% creator per code. Staff finds that this proposal is consistent with Bonner County Revised Code. That includes my presentation, I'm having to take questions.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask the applicant to make their presentation, please. And please state your name when you get up to the mic for the record. Thank you.
Jeff Jensen, James A. Sloan Associates Jr., the engineer and representative for the project. Staff did a great job presenting that, I don't have anything to add.
And I don't have any questions. You can go. I'm gonna quickly read through the rules of testimony. If you wish to testify, you will need to please state your name for the record. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per person. You may give your three minutes to another person, so they have up to six minutes to speak, but no one will be allowed more than six minutes. Public comments are limited to the specifics of this application only. If you agree with another speaker, please just acknowledge agreement, no need to repeat the information again. Any personal or derogatory comments about another person or the position will not be allowed. Clapping, cheering, or booing will also not be allowed. If anyone has a written statement they would like to be entered into the record, this would be the time to do that. Okay, so then I'm gonna call for supporting public testimony. If there's anyone in person or online that would like to stand up in support. Or any neutral testimony or any opposing. Anyone in the audience who did not sign up to speak that would like to enter any comments into record? All right, is there any rebuttal to this applicant? There's nobody, so there's no rebuttal. Okay, so then I'm going to close the hearing to the public testimony. At this time, and deliberate or admit it. So I found it interesting that 71.9% of the most in demand for new housing are single-family units or one unit households in, according to our comprehensive plan for the county. And I believe this actually is helping with that percentage. And the fact that it also has its own urban water and wastewater services was a good thing to see, even though despite DEQ's comment. I did see in the application that the sewer is available, so I don't believe that that is a concern as well. So having said that, I approve file CUP 0012-22. Miller duplex located on Snowplow Road, finding that it is in accord with the Bonner County Revised Code as enumerated in the following conclusions of law and based upon the evidence submitted up to the time of the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. I further adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of law as set forth in the staff report or as amended during this hearing. Which didn't happen, and direct planning staff to draft written findings and conclusions to reflect this decision and transmit to all interested parties. Great. The action does not result in taking of private property. The action that could be taken to obtain the approval of preliminary plat is to complete the conditions of approval as adopted. So then I will close this file. Oh wait, yeah, okay. I am closing this file, and we are going to move on to conditional use permit 0013-22, Hickey Farms. Is, has everyone? There is no one new online or anything for this right now?
We have six people online.
New, okay. Okay, so I don't, I was, that's why I was gonna see if I need to repeat the hearing procedure, but I think everyone heard it once, so. Or sees them up on the board there. Okay. Okay, so then. Oh, good call, thank you. None. I have no conflict of interest in this, for this file. Okay, so I will turn it over to the staff.
Hearing Examiner, Daniel Britt, by any staff for the record. We're here to discuss CUP 0013-22. It's gonna be for performing arts venue, food processing facility, private community facility, and expanded seasonal harvest facilities. These are the standards for which this CUP was reviewed against. That case requesting a conditional use permit for arts venue, for the processing facility, private community facility, and expanded seasonal harvest facilities. Site is located on Hickey Road, Highway 200. Site is 200 acres. Land is mostly a flat farm field with some timber on the southwest corner. Parcel is currently zoned AF20, developed with a single-family dwelling with several outbuildings. Little background on this. Parcel, it is uncladded, so there's no bits wrong on there, I apologize. Size is 200 acres, zoning is AF20, land use designation is act of course land. Hickey Road is a Bonner County owned and maintained right-of-way with the gravel travel service. So some environmental features that are found on this property does contain a small amount of slopes that we see here in the northwest corner of the property. It does contain map wetlands which follow the streams that are found on the property. That are intermittent, as well as near the north, near the slope, there is a wetland. As well. Water services provided through individual well, as well as owner water, which is a correction to the staff report, you'll find that in there. Sewer disposal is a separate system. Fire protection is supported through Northside Fire District. Power is Northern Lights and within Lake Hunter Ray's full district number 84. These are the agencies that were routed for comment. Bonner County Road and Bridge, EQ, and Health District. All give letters of recommendation of laws that need to be followed according to them. I don't, Department of Fish and Game had no comment. There were no public comments received in this file. So when we started looking at the code for the different uses here, we're gonna start at the top, it's down in the staff report for the arts, performing arts, and recording studio, this is found in our commercial use table, BCRC 1233. They are required to follow Note 2, which provides access to the property itself. That is either built to private road standards or titled to, has to be built out to accommodate for fire medical law enforcement. It does, Hickey Road is a Bonner County owned and maintained 50-foot wide right-of-way, it's constructed to meet standards Title 2 of Bonner County Revised Code. In addition to all 333, they also need to meet the standards set forth in BCRC 12483 for the arts, performing arts, and recording studios. So A through I, I will go through one at a time. We look to make sure that there's sufficient land to accommodate the uses that are being proposed, as well as the structures on the property. There is 200 acres, they're meeting the standard. The access is already meeting the road standards set forth in Title 2, as well as Appendix A. For Hickey Road, which we've discussed earlier. See, there's no proposal to have associated lodging for artists or technical staff. So therefore, this standard is not applicable to this project. Adequate fires to watch supply for fire suppression is determined by applicable fire district chief or agency providing protection shall be provided. We know there are within Northside Fire District. They were one of the agencies that were routed. I reached out to the fire chief personally to get a comment, I received no comment. We can probably draw conclusions since they're open to water, there's probably sufficient water for fire suppression. That case would just need to reach out to fire chief and discuss their plan and whether further. Accessory uses such as poles and spas. Those were not proposed for this use. So there was no review for that. The food service facility shall conform to the regulations set forth by the State of Idaho. They are proposing a commercial kitchen, which I will get into a little bit later in this presentation, which are meeting that standard. Health, safety requirements shall perform with the doctor codes based on doctorcy type instruction. Bonner County does not have a building department, however, any requirements may come forth, say from their insurance provider, we simply don't know, we're getting to the fire chief as well, so I'm sure that we will meet those standards, so we have none. No deviation that they've asked for in this portion of the code is to be able to sell liquor by the drink individually. It has been recommended they follow all state and federal laws for that. There's sufficient off-street parking for artists and technical staff members, which we'll get into a little bit later. So moving on to the industrial use table for food processing, manufacturing, frozen foods, greater than 2,000 square feet. Is, requires a conditional use permit. The building that they're gonna contain this basically commercial kitchen for is about 2,000 square feet, or we still want to, building itself is 8,500 square feet. Getting into the public use table, 12335. This is for the private community facilities. The requirement is a conditional use permit and that it meets Note 3, once again, this is access. We've learned already that Hickey Road is a Bonner County owned and maintained 50-foot wide public right-of-way. And it's constructed, once again, to meet the standards found in Title 2 of Bonner County Revised Code. So BCRC 12494 is our seasonal harvest facilities code. It is limiting in its scope, whether that's hours. Uses that can occur during those hours. And certain features that they can provide to the public. In order to move beyond these requirements or permitted outright, they have to meet the, just the want to expand that facility requires conditions for the, it's not really a standard to follow, other than the ask. Their ask alone is sufficient enough for that expansion to take place. So the findings of facts have changed since the time the staff report was prepared. I'm gonna back up for a moment, I'd like to get back into the parking, technical staff, as well as all these other uses. It did mean the parking requirement, they proposed, I think, over 500,000 square feet for their parking areas. If they need additional beyond that, they have 200 acres, they'll be back, no problem. But given all the uses that they have proposed, the breakdowns in the staff quarters, they get into the presentation. But they basically have to come up with about 250,000 square feet, so they have more than double set site for parking. The conclusions of law haven't changed since the time the staff report was prepared. These are the conditions as found in the staff report as well. These have not changed since the time of presentation. Staff finds that this proposal is consistent with Bonner County Revised Code, and I have any taking any questions at this time?
Okay, so if the applicant would please make their presentation. And make sure to state your name into the microphone for the record, please.
My name is Dean Holt. And I am the representative spokesperson for Hickey Farms. My mom, Jackie Holt, and unfortunately, I own the farms. So I can keep it pretty brief, since I think it's all been covered. We have a successful, fairly successful seasonal harvest festival that we've been growing and growing our produce. We'd like to expand on that and offer some other offerings. Currently, this year, we have 17 part-time kids that we hire and adults to help with that. We, last year, did about over 1,000 field trips for people in the community and for kids to come and get agri education. And some of the stuff we're looking for would expand on that. With the kitchen, we could help our own produce, we could produce a safe way, we possibly teach classes on canning and different things like that. The retail area, I mean, we just would like to have more, we're not looking to open a full store all year. And be for, when we have festivals or things to sell. And hosting weddings would be a great compliment to our facility, we have been asked numerous times. We've been looking to do things like hosting weddings and events of that kind. Obviously, the expanded harvest festival things, it's like maybe once in a while operates outside the hours, have a few more bouncy houses. There's things like that, but we just need to say we want to do them, it's an obvious thing. Really, what we're trying to do is generate some income so we can move forward with our farm. Next year will become a century farm. And I, my brothers and my sister are the fourth generation, and I have two boys, my sister has two girls. We'd like to settle up for success to be able to pass on to them as a generation. And our whole thing is to keep 360 acres in the Selly Valley from being subdivided into housing, and that is our goal, don't want to see that happen. So we've been trying to do it the right way, and coming in front of you, and for instance, like this year, we did talk to Pan Am Health, we have a temporary food establishment, we can sell a few things at our pump and patch, so. We're gonna get accustomed to using them. That was one reason I go on the staff report, said we hadn't contacted them about commercial kitchen, because we're waiting for this to be done, but things like that. Thank you very much.
Matt actually answered the one question I had, so, thank you. Okay. So at this time, we will take any public testimony. I imagine everyone already heard me read the rules. You can do that again, unless there's anyone new online. So is there any? I'm gonna call it this time for any supporting public testimony in person or online?
You have one person online with their hand up.
Okay.
Hi, can you hear me? Hi, Dave Bowman, Selly Valley. So I have one comment that I've already put forward to the planning department, but I'd like to just reiterate it here. That's a procedural thing, that where the code, I understand that the Title 12 gives authority to the hearing examiner to hear these cases. But in the rules for standards review of applications for conditional use permit. The hearing examiner is not included, there would have been in AM 0013-22, which got put back because of lack of proper public notice, so. I would guess that was assumed that would have been passed before this, so I want to at least get that on the record. It seems to me like this should be put, pushed back until after that, that application has been heard. So just to get on the record, and then I have a question, because 12, 12223 and 12225 both state that, well, 223 says zoning commission shall review particular facts and circumstances and must find that there's adequate evidence, et cetera, but also 12225 following the public hearing, the zoning commission shall consider the application, may approve or deny conditional use permit. And then it goes on to say, if the zoning commission denies the conditional use permit, they shall state in writing why, and so on and so forth. So I'm curious, how does that work? If this, if you approve or deny, and then it goes to the zoning commission after this, and they do the opposite, how does that work? That's my question. That's all I have, I'd like to give the rest of my three minutes to my wife who's here, we're on the same Zoom thing, and then she was gonna speak also, if that's okay. That's all I have.
And can you have your wife state her name for the record, please, when she speaks?
Yes, hi, my name is Susan Bowman, and I live on North City Road in the Selly Valley. And I am also the planning consultant for Key Bar County Rural, so I just wanted to mention that. And I just want to say, first of all, that I'm not opposed to the Hickey Farms having a conditional use permit for an agribusiness. I believe that this application goes way beyond an agribusiness. And I don't think it's been fully thought through, so I think we need to back up a little bit and do a little bit more research about this, because it's really unclear what the impact of the community is going to be based on the application. So if you approve this today, you're approving their application. From what I can tell from the staff report, they are proposing 2,000 parking spaces, so I want confirmation on that, that's a lot of parking spaces. So, I mean, that's, you know, like, what, a quarter of the population of Sandpoint trying to come to this one spot at the, all at the same time for a concert or a wedding. The staff report, I might want to mention, is silent about the weddings part of it. Weddings can be pretty big events. Added with, you know, alcohol can be highly impactful to neighbors. If this application is approved, you're going to be approving it for what the application says, which is 20-plus employees. We don't really know what that means. Anything over 20, I guess, and then over 400 people. So how, what is the limit of the number of people that can come? Is it 2,000 or 4,000 because it's 2,000 parking spaces? I think we need more information. We don't have any information on traffic safety. So this particular gravel road, which first of all is going to create a lot of dust with that many cars, and that was also not addressed as an impact. Has no turn lane on, off of 200. So now you're creating, if you approve, you're creating a traffic safety hazard. Because if you have 2,000 cars, or even 100 or 200 cars, trying to come to Hickey Farms, turning left, it is not gonna work. That's, that's gonna be a high impact for the entire county, and then they're gonna be wanting to go around to other roads. And so that is even more impact to, are they gonna be putting out signs how to get to their farm? These kinds of things aren't even addressed. There's no plan for security. This means, you know, we have, what, four sheriffs on duty at any time? If you have, you know, a concert of 2,000 cars, and, you know, however many thousand people, that's not defined on the site plan, how many people can fit. Then, you know, you've got, you know, now the deputies might be called there, and that's highly impactful to our, our security. Again, I mentioned the gravel road is having a lot of dust, that was absolutely not, not even addressed. And with that many cars going down it, now those taxpayers are gonna be on the hook upgrading that.
Sorry, but your time is up now?
Okay, can I have my three minutes, though?
Given you a few extra minutes that we probably shouldn't have, but.
I've just had my three minutes, then, can you?
Three minutes, actually, you were given additional time on top of the little bit your husband gave you.
Oh, I was given three minutes, and?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, okay, I just, I just want to also address noise. There's no way to mitigate the noise for a concert with 2,000 people or 200 people, there's no way to mitigate that. And the lighting, there's no way to mitigate that either.
We have one more on, online. Okay. Go ahead, John.
Um, yes, John, a plant sagel, I'd like to give my time back to Susan Bowman because I cannot speak.
Okay. That was John.
Yeah. Okay, I'm back, I guess, thank you, John. I wanted to go over noise again, because again, I want, I want to make the point that there's no way to mitigate that, yeah, noise from. Thousands or hundreds of cheering people on top of maybe a loud rock band, right? And I, I have a drummer that practices in my neighborhood here in Selly Valley, that's a half a mile away, and I can hear him practicing. So what is a whole entire concert, this is a rural area, and people move here, you know, to have the comfort and repose of a rural area. The lighting, again, I would say, even if you're making them have down lighting in a parking lot of that size, that's going to spill over no matter what. Water, there isn't really, the plan is that Oden Water will provide for this, but Oden Water has no knowledge of this huge event center that they're creating. I think this needs to be scaled back, and I think we need to get some guts in the road, in particular trip generation, traffic safety. For the residents of Bonner County, how they will upgrade and upkeep the road with that much traffic down it so that the taxpayers are on the hook for that. I'd like to hear answers about this, please. And twelve dash two thirty-three requires that the proposed use will neither create a hazard nor be dangerous. So it can't be approved unless you know that you're not creating a hazard. And I do think you have a traffic hazard that would put the county at liability too. You need a traffic safety report at the bare minimum, you need a trip generation at the bare minimum, and I think you need some parameters as to how many people are going to be allowed to come there at one time. And then the, the application just says that they will turn the noise down at ten P M. What does that mean? That's not defined, we don't know what that means. And I would like confirmation from the staff as to how many parking stalls are actually allowed, not required, but allowed. Because that really is going to define the impact to the neighborhood, which is really what conditional use.
Uh, is there any? Well, I'm not really sure what that was, if that's opposing or not, but is there any? I mean.
It sounded like it was an opposite.
Yeah, it did, even though they started out saying in support, but we will go ahead and look, is there any neutral testimony or any other opposing testimony? Okay, so at this point, and is there anyone in the audience who did not sign up to speak that would like to enter comments into the record? Okay, so I'm going to call for the applicant if they have a rebuttal that they would like to give to those opposing comments, you can do that at this time. I know there was.
Also, I didn't know if somebody said supported, or we have supporting people first or no, or afterwards?
If someone wants to stand up and, and provide their support, they can do that at this time, yeah. Go ahead, and then just please state your name for the record. Ah, I get it, you were gunning for that mic all day.
My name is James, James Williams, AKA Bruno. And I just come to support the Hickey Farms, the whole family, I believe what they're doing is good, and after hearing all the testimony stuff, I. Definitely believe it's, it's good what they're trying to achieve.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience or online that would like to provide supporting testimony today? Okay, and then we have no neutral, any other opposing testimony online or in the audience today? Okay, so then this would be an opportunity for the applicants to step up and rebut any of the opposing testimony that you might want to address. And if you could state your name again, just so people know. Who's talking?
Yes, my name is Dean Holden, yeah. I, our pumpkin patch has grown, very much so, as a very seasonal harvest. Festivity thing, I can't speak to how many cars we get a day, I just know how many we count in the parking lot. And for us to try to stop people coming up the road for that would be very, very hard for us to, to do as a growing business. So, you know, we put in an extra parking to accommodate for stuff like that. We have counted cars, we had a family member get married, and it was fifty-three cars and it was a hundred and twenty. We're worried about that. We would turn down any noise to be compliant at our property line, in compliance with Bonner County Code. Which I think the property line is four hundred and twenty feet from where we would be proposed, or in sight to me, or somewhere in that area. And the nearest house is over a third of a mile away. On our end. So, I mean, and those were really the only two little things, and if you want any more, thank you.
At this time, can I ask some questions?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so she did mention. Security. For some of your get-togethers, gatherings, would that be a service that you guys would be able to provide if felt there was a need?
If we totally thought there was a need, we would, I actually worked security at the Kibbe Dome in college, and that was my work-study program.
Okay.
So I am aware.
Familiar with that, okay.
So I would, we would be able to do that, and I, I'm the smallest boy. So my brother sitting right there is bigger than I am, and he is a twin.
Also, the sheriff's department was noticed for this file, as you know, we had an opportunity to comment, we didn't get anything negative from them, saying that we wouldn't be able to serve in some kind of security capacity, depending on the situation.
Okay.
And we have three, it's not in the staff, we did have three commercial entrances there, because of my county road, takes a fire or anything like that.
Okay, thank you. No, I, thank you, I'm done. Um.
I think they have some comments as well.
I just wanted to address a couple of concerns that came up, Jake. On what it was, the sheriff, they were routed, no response from the sheriff. So we always rely on the agency's expertise to get back to us, Oden Water was routed, they're not a taxing district, but we routed them out of courtesy. They fell silent on that road bridge, didn't make comments, basically have any concerns about any traffic going through the county roads. I don't think you may commit to assumption that everybody's going to access the property off of Highway two hundred. Address the weddings, that's one use, I guess you could possibly do in a private community facility. So that ask was addressed, and that's how we would get wedding venues, they could have proper retreats there, they could go on their base or private community facility, so. That is addressing the staff reports. Also. To the parking issue, because of the parking requirements involved. Yes, they have to come up with that many spaces, and there is space for that, that's how we do the calculation based on those uses. I don't know if it's safe to assume that two thousand people would be there at one event or not. We're not really controlling that, they currently code allows people to have up to four hundred people for an event. Without any special use permit at this time, if they were four hundred, they'd have to be part of that, so it's inappropriate by a concert, you want to sell five hundred tickets, you know, conditions are, sorry, especially use permit. If you're having three hundred people out there and sell three hundred tickets, not, it would be the county for any type of permitting, or at least it's fine. So, that's all I had to add. Thank you.
Jake?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to address Mr. Bowman's comments regarding the hearing examiner's authority to review this file, right? So he sent me an email earlier this morning, I got back to it a couple hours later after I got out of the meeting. I have no idea whether accounting for this to. So. To go back a little bit, back in April, March, April this year, there was a, a file, a land use amendment file that went through that split the planning and zoning commission. So during that, a lot of where it said T and Z Commission got modified throughout, throughout the code, right? So, after reviewing that change, we've noticed there's a few spots in there that only have zoning commission where there should be zoning commission and hearing, right? So I do have an amendment going forward with the board next week that addresses a portion of that, Mr. Bowman pointed out another spot that was also missed, so I'll add that to the next round of updates. What that amendment does not do is grant authority for condition use permits to be heard in front of the hearing examiner. It doesn't modify your jurisdiction or your decision authority over this file type, that's established in one, two, seven. And after I read, after I got the email this morning from Mr. Bowman, I spoke with Bill Wilson, our counsel, and very familiar with land use, represents us in all of the. Court proceedings that, you know, follow land use or something, those all judicial duties, so he's very familiar with us. So twelve dash one, two, six, one, two, seven, and one, two, eight, one, two, nine is what establishes the hearing examiner and your authority who appoints you and what file types you can hear. In that it states, under one, two, seven, A, one, three, that conditional use permits, including planning of government and tier three home occupations can be heard by you. In point eight, it states that for any application, the hearing examiner shall provide notice, conduct public meetings, consider application, and render written final decisions based on the standards of procedures provided in this title. For the board of zoning, for the board and zoning commission. So there it establishes your ability to make a decision on this file. Furthermore, if you go down into conditional use permits, twelve dash two, two, three, which is what Mr. Bowman quoted. It states that the zoning commission, except as otherwise provided in this title, is charged with conducting at least one public hearing, and it goes on to explain a similar process, right? That they have to view the particular findings of fact and the circumstances and make a render a decision. So when I spoke with Bill about this, his interpretation, this is where it states, except otherwise provided in this title, is it affects both twelve dash two, two, three, two, two, four, two, two, five. And where it states otherwise, that, that your authority granted in chapter one is affected by this, by this section here. So there's no question on the county's point of view, or from the county, from, from my position as the director, nor from legal counsel, that you don't have authority to hear any conditional use permits. Either this one or the one you just approved or twenty minutes ago.
Thank you, Jake. Is there any other rebuttals or anything that you want to add at this time? And I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing to the public testimony. And I have one to deliberate.
Oh, it was also mentioned, sorry, I should have said, that Oden Water wasn't, had anyone here this was going on? The agency routing did go, you did go to Oden Water for their comment you received.
Yeah, and Daniel mentioned that too. He beat you to that punch.
The thing is noteworthy that the sheriff handles any noises to play itself, I think, department.
True, and we've had that issue come up in the past, and that's what we've stated, is that that would be a sheriff's department issue, not for us to address, so. Thank you for reminding, for putting that out there as well. Okay, well, on a obviously different note than the opposing comments here. One thing that I have noticed in the, is that Bonner County land use agricultural is only represented by five point seven percent of the county. And of course forestry is, or forest is eighty-four point eight percent. I see this application working, or I see this applicant working towards an opportunity to bring more light on, even though a very considerably low number percentage of land use, but something that's extremely important to this county. And I especially like the idea of the educational opportunities, and how you've mentioned that you've had over a thousand field trips. Just, and so, you know, I think that we need more of that, I think farming is extremely important and very undersold, and I think this is an opportunity to. Maintain the farming for your family and maintain the land that the way you want to use it, but as well as also bring the county a little bit more into light of what. The farming and agricultural businesses do around here. And so, having said that. I don't have a fine money thing.
I think I've mentioned this at several zoning commissions as well, is that it's not a matter of approval or deny on conditional use permits. The, the code grants the planning director authority to, to determine what use is being requested, and how that fits with our code, or if it doesn't at all. So we had a lot of debate and question and conversation over what uses would be requested by the applicants. Even prior to the application and several pre-application meetings with them, they were very concerned over their long-term plans, they want to solidify those in approval. So with that, we determine these specific uses that we value, we best fit what they're, what is currently allowed in the code, what they're requesting is from the applicant. That being said, these are conditional approvals, right?
Right.
So it's not a, does it fit or does it not, it's what conditions should be applied. So that's where we have our conditions of approval, as we outlined in, in ours, which is based straight out of our land use code, and what, what isn't being fulfilled, or what is, and what we felt needed to, needed to be added. We have had other conditional use permits where we had a lot of public there were concerned about dust on the road and whatnot, the conditions were added to a C U P. To eliminate dust or, or noise or whatnot, so it was, it's on the, the decision maker for that to determine what conditions should be added. So if you feel like there's other conditions that should be added to this file, to accommodate, you know, public input or whatnot, feel free to kind of enumerate that, or we can help you through any of those, but.
Well, and in listening to the opposing comments, and as Daniel had pointed out, I do believe the appropriate agencies were addressed. And were made aware of those concerns, and then, of course, bringing it back around to the security issue, that seemed to be a big one. That is really the sheriff's department issue, that's not something that I would. I don't believe that I would even need to add into this, because it has nothing to do with the planning side of this. So, and I, the reason I brought up the agricultural percentage and stuff, just from having read the comprehensive plan. And that's what kind of stood out to me was what this application also does seem to address. Yeah, so that's, it kind of just stood out more to me, I guess, probably because. I live brutally, so. Yeah. Okay. Just keep bumping me back, sorry, I got bumped back. Stuck with you a minute, sorry. So I did notice, so. Should I be reading it on the amended?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. And for some reason, I kept kicking back to the previous file. The one that was kind of days. Okay. I approve file C U P zero, zero, one, three, dash, two, two, for a performing arcs venue, food processing facility, private community facility. And expanded seasonal harvest festivities located in section thirty-four, township fifty-eight, north range one east, Boise Meridian, Bonner County, Idaho. Finding that it is in accord with the Bonner County revised code as enumerated in the following conclusions of law, and based upon the evidence submitted up to the time of the staff report was repaired and testimony was received at this hearing. I further adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of law as set forth in the staff report. And direct planning staff to draft written findings and conclusions to reflect this decision and transmit to all interested parties. This action does not result in a taking of private property. The action could be taken to obtain the approval of the conditional use permit is, excuse me, let her say that again, the action that could be taken to obtain the approval of the conditional use permit is to complete the conditions of approval as adopted. Need to read the findings of fact in a minute? Okay.
Just in the decision.
Okay. Okay, so I now close file C U P zero, zero, one, three, dash, two, two. Okay, so I now close file C U P zero, zero, one, three, dash, two, two. And are there any schedule reminders, updates, or announcements?
I don't really have anything that I'm working on that affects you too much. We'll continue to. I tried to give an update on anything I'm working on that might affect the hearing body, right? So as I mentioned during my rebuttal portion there, is I have a decision or amendment file that's going to be brought next week. I don't think any of those changes significantly impacting you make decisions on. I'm just seeing stuff on some changes and whatnot that's being proposed. And then some other stuff on road standards for some administrative files, but nothing that affects you. Other than that, like the staffing is going really well. We just hired two, I like to give you an update on my staff. So we have a couple of new people that started last week and this week, so it's going really well and kind of training mode. And, yeah, so I think the, 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 it's functioning well. We're seeing a, we thought we were seeing a slight decline in number of files being received, but then last Thursday, we got like twelve in one day.
Must be the nice weather.
I know, so when it was really smoky, it all came into the office, and it was really quiet for a couple of days. And once it cleared, it got suddenly out, everyone showed up. Yeah, we're still kind of touch along and yeah, we're, we're not, we don't have as many hearing files as we did earlier this summer, but we definitely have a lot of administrative, a lot of boundary line and lot line adjustments. Family exemption, stuff that we make decisions on in, in staff's side, so not so much stuff that comes to you. But so we're really busy, and even if you don't schedule somewhere, you just know we, we've got other.
I've been in your office.
That's all you have to do.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, then at this time of two, twenty-two, I have to remember my military time. I am going to adjourn this public hearing of the Bonner County Hearing Examiner until October nineteenth, twenty twenty-two.